Mrs. Eichels.
Here.
Dr. Hooker.
Here.
Mrs. Johnston.
Here.
Mrs. Lewis. Mrs. Singh.
Yeah.
Hey, Bill.
Hey, guys. How everybody?
Hello.
Doing well.
Good.
Okay, could I have a motion to... Can I have the agenda for the evening, please?
So moved.
Second.
That was Elizabeth. Was that your second?
Yep.
Uh, all in favor? Do we need a roll call? We don't need a roll call, do we?
We don't typically do a roll call for that one.
Aye.
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 Okay, could I have a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official? So moved. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, do we do need a roll call? Mr. Davis?
Dr. Hooker.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston.
Hi.
Mrs. Singh.
Hi.
Mrs. Eichels.
Hi.
Now, how do we go into exec?
Are we gonna...
Kirk will pause us, pause us here in a second.
And Amy and Jim are being admitted into the meeting to join us.
All those who agree, yeah, aye.
Amy.
All those opposed, I don't think we need to oppose.
Yes. Oh. I've got the wrong camera on.
But somebody's laughing.
There we go. Sorry about that.
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
Okay, is Jim here?
Jim seems to be having...
I'm gonna mute.
Oh, Jim just connecting audio. Okay.
Okay. Well, we've got some of these background sound on.
It's not me.
Okay, I'm quiet, so I think we're good. Okay, so we have Kirk. Is he back?
I'm here.
Okay. Okay, so we are, um, we, we are back to the open session and we are at, um, Agenda Item Five, Approval of Supplemental and Personal Service Contracts. Could I have a motion to accept the supplemental and personal service contracts for today?
Um, I would like, uh, Nancy, can I make a motion that we remove Item UU, I believe it is?
Yes.
Uh, because I don't think we need the assistant or site supervisor at this point because we just don't have that much sport. So I'd like to remove that off the supplemental list, please.
Okay, and so we'll revisit that when we know what our fall season...
Yeah, so I'd make a motion that we remove UU off that list.
Okay, and that is based on the fact that the, um, HSAA has not yet given us full information on what competitive sports will be happening or how they'll be happening and we feel that possibly all seasons will be delayed.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, all those in favor of, um...
Nancy, Nancy, I just wanted to, um, just state that as I understand it, all of these contracts, uh, just want to verify with Kirk, um, are contracts that we've revised a little bit because we, we're in a new world and we're not exactly sure that these sports are gonna go forward. So as I understand it, that although we are approving these supplemental contracts, you know, with significant dollars that we're doing it subject to, um, that the sports actually occur and to the extent that they don't occur, that we would not be responsible for the entirety of the contract. That's what I understand. Is that correct?
Yeah.
It would be prorated.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, so based on the supplemental and personal contracts, letter five, A through...
Well, we still need to do a roll call on the removal of U, right?
Uh, we don't need to roll call on the removal. We're just making a roll call on votes.
Great.
Uh, A through V, V minus UU.
Yeah, so I'm restating the motion.
Perfect.
Base, letter five, based on A through, uh, V, V minus UU, the site supervisor, um, and knowing that they will be prorated as we get more information. And we have a motion from Eddie with a second from...
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth. Um, could we have a roll call?
Dr. Hooker.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston.
Hi.
Mrs. Lewis.
Hi.
Mrs. Singh.
Hi.
Mrs. Eichels.
Hi. Okay, now, um, we will move to Item Six, Approval of Supplemental Personal Service Contracts, uh, Letter A. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a roll call, please?
Dr. Hooker.
Aye.
Mrs. Singh.
Hi.
Mrs. Johnston.
Hi.
Mrs. Lewis.
No.
Mrs. Eichels.
Hi. Okay, so, um, I'm going to turn this over to Kirk for the approval of administrative contract, um, Item Seven.
Thank you, Nancy, uh, and welcome, everybody, again, and welcome Jim Nichols to the meeting. Uh, all of you know, Mr. Nichols as our current, uh, Indian Hill Primary Principal, and tonight we are recommending the approval of Jim Nichols as our new Director of Operations for Indian Hill. Uh, Jim brings a wealth of experience, as you all know, to his current role, uh, and many years of experience from multiple districts to this new role where Jim will be able to use those skills to help us with both classified and certified operations in the district, uh, in human resources and, uh, daily management of our campus. We're really excited to have Jim join the team. Um, he, uh, conducted himself, um, magnificently in a efficient and tough, uh, interview round, and our team is very proud of him and also very happy to bring him forth tonight for consideration.
Okay, is there any discussion from the board?
Right here.
We're very lucky to have him.
Absolutely.
We're thrilled to have you on board, Jim.
Yep.
Very impressed, Jim. You have big shoes to fill, but I think you're, you'll fill those immediately, not, not concerned. You'll be a great addition to the team. Um, so could I have a motion to approve the administrative contract for Mr. Nichols?
So moved.
You have a second? I think Elizabeth moved second.
Second.
Kim, uh, roll call?
Mr. Johnston.
Hi.
Mrs. Lewis.
Hi.
Mrs. Singh.
Hi.
Dr. Hooker.
Aye.
Mrs. Eichels.
Hi. Welcome to Central Office, Jim. Buckle your seatbelt.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated.
Okay.
Congratulations, Jim.
Mr. Kentucky, I'm with number eight.
Yes, so, uh, for your consideration this evening, board members, we have the second reading of our adjusted 2020-2021 school calendar. As you all know, we shared draft versions with the community uh, at our last special meeting, and we are asking now for the board to review and approve that adjusted calendar that will allow our staff time to prepare for our brave return to school and also allow us to implement, uh, the many changes to our reopening plan that we have put in place for our students to have a safe return to school after August 27th.
Okay. So...
All for this change, I think we really, it was a good idea. Thank you to the teachers for pushing for this. Uh, thank you for administration for bringing it to us. I think starting these kids a week later also gives us more time for COVID to calm down in Ohio. Pray, please. But, uh, it gives us more time, so I think it's a wonderful idea. Good change.
And to adjust to all the new, the new normal, whatever that may look like. Um, so that moves us on then to Item Nine, the resolution for approval of the school year calendar. Is there any other discussion? Amy, is there anything that you would like us to know before we vote?
I, I just want to say thank you for considering the change and giving both teachers and students the best opportunity to start the school year on a positive note.
Thank you. Okay, so could I have, um, a motion to accept the resolution for the approval of the new, uh, 2020-2021 school year calendar?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Johnston.
Hi.
Mrs. Singh.
Hi.
Dr. Hooker.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Hi.
Mrs. Eichels.
Hi.
Amy, I just want to say something that, you know, we have moved the calendar a week back, but if we have to move from Plan One to Plan Two, like from Plan A to B or B to C, there'll not be much transition time for teachers to be moving. Like, you know, we, the, I don't think it would be fair to say that, like, you know, in spring, you all took a week to prepare, which I understand, it was needed. It was a new thing, but I hope the, you know, the teachers will be more prepared this time to move from one plan to the other quickly.
I know...
Go ahead, Amy.
I know that, uh, teachers have been working very hard this summer to...
I have no doubt about it.
Learn new skills and, um, create virtual activities for their students and we will, as always, do the best that we can and provide our best for our students.
Yeah. I have no doubt about that. Guys will provide an excellent service to the students, which you all have done it, and I'm sure you will continue doing that. And we are really proud to have such nice and dedicated teachers in the district taking care of our students. Really appreciate you all.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, we are moving on to Item Ten, which is the, uh, 2021 School Reopen Plan Dialogue. And, uh, I think we have really spent a lot of time discussing every possible scenario and just to be clear, for I know for people who watch of the board meetings, when we have these special meetings, it's a bit different. It's not like a typical meeting where we have things on the agenda and if we need to add to the agenda, we can do that. When, if something isn't on the agenda for a special meeting, we cannot vote on it. And so we're basically voting on resolutions, and I think that there was a bit of confusion last time about the resolution that we passed, that we basically passed a resolution to tell the administration that they could use either Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C, given different guidelines, which we did not discuss in detail. We did not discuss so much the guidelines, but we, we approved the use of the three plans. So today, we don't need to rehash all those three plans because those have been approved and we've let the administration have the leeway to do what's necessary. What I think we really need to talk about today is what are the guardrails for those three plans? And how tight do we want those guardrails to be? And once they have the plans and they have the guidelines for what indicates those plans, then they can get to the business of getting the schools ready for reopening. So that's the discussion tonight is what are the guidelines? And we have our county, all the states, the state's guidelines for the county based on the color system, and then we also need to consider our own, um, our own situation. If we have a number of positive tests and we have teachers out, that's one thing. If we have no positive tests and things are going well, that's another thing. So I think that's the discussion, and I know the administration has some perspective on how we should start the year. So why don't we start first with, um, the administration, Melissa? Um, where, where are your heads right now?
So Nancy, thank you for that introduction and talking a little bit about, um, how we would shift between plans. As everybody knows, uh, there has been a development at the state level with a countywide health alert system. We had some dialogue about that last time. What we'll be sharing with our community, uh, with your, uh, approval is an alignment to that system, uh, an alignment that also allows for us to be nimble and adapt and be flexible, as you said, based on what we're seeing with trend data around us, uh, logistical needs or changes in orders or the law as we go through the school year. So we're going to take an opening to the school year and we're going to then spend time reevaluating our plan basically on a bi-weekly, uh, basis. And so right now, based on the county alert system, if we were in the red in Hamilton County, Indian Hill would open under our Plan B, which is our hybrid learning plan. We would then take time after September 10th, two weeks into our school year, to reassess and reevaluate where we are with our county health officials, our local education partners, and of course, with the Board of Education members and our teams to reassess, look at data, look at trends, see if we have logistical and operational needs that have arisen, and then we would be able to adapt if necessary or required. And again, some of those things we don't know yet. So that's the, the nice part about our plans and having three of those plans is that we can make a shift if we're required to or if it's necessary. And having this alignment to use the alert system as a guide and some guideposts moving forward, we think is the best way for us to continue to rely on the most current medical and health data available, continue to rely on the recommendation of our county health commissioner and doctors, and continue to work with our partners moving forward to provide the best services we can for our families.
So you didn't, you said that, well, but what you left off was, so, um, so see if we're purple, correct?
Yes, if the alert system were to trend, uh, in a negative way, Dr. Hooker, and we ended up in purple, then Indian Hill would shift to Plan C, which would be the distance learning or remote learning plan for those students who started off in person in Plan B. If things were to improve and progress and move into the orange level or the yellow level, there would be an easing of restrictions and permissions, and we would shift from Plan B into Plan A, which would be a five-day in-person schedule. So based on the current trend data, we would be opening in Plan B, which is a hybrid model because Hamilton County is in red, but as Hamilton County shifts, our plans can shift, and we would be assessing those, looking at that 14-day trend data throughout the year.
Mr. Kentucky, as I understand it, it's guardrails, right? So to the extent that we were in orange, for example, and we had a hundred children that had COVID and we had, you know, fifty teachers that had COVID, even though we were only in orange or yellow, we, those are guardrails and we likely would be in a different situation.
Yes, it are, our document that we'll be sharing with parents specifically states that if we deal with an outbreak or an emergency or any logistical challenges based on spread, based on illness in any color level, then we would reevaluate our current plan, and that might necessitate a shift.
So can you...
That's really, I think, really a good point you're making there is that we have to look at what's going on locally. Uh, you know, this, this is the ultimate guardrails, but then we have to look locally. Uh, Ken, Amy, would you please comment because the, uh, OEA announced today that they don't agree with that alignment. They, they think you should, if you're in red, everybody is not in school. Uh, do you know where your teachers stand on this? I like what we have, but I just wanted your input and your, uh, where you stand and where the teachers stand.
I can speak for myself and, um, for those that I have discussed this with in our organization, uh, we are not a part of OEA, for those, um, that may not know that. We are our own local organization, and the reason for that decision, the reason that we went independent was because we wanted to be able to do what we felt was right, um, in all areas of our jobs for our community. Um, teachers were heavily involved in creating this plan, and the color coding system was, was part of that. So I think that having the plan in place is good and the flexibility, knowing that we have the flexibility, um, to change if needed, um, is also reassuring.
Thank you.
So can you clarify for me, Kirk, what the opening plans are at the moment? Are we opening with Plan A or Plan B?
Great question, and, uh, again, opening in Plan B, a hybrid model, is what we would be doing because Hamilton County is in red currently, and I'm gonna let Dr. Stewart, uh, give us a little summary of what a hybrid model looks like.
Can I stop for one second, though? Didn't we say when we talked about this that we would make this decision one week before the start of school? So it's what Hamilton is, Hamilton County is, one week before the start of school. So on the 20th, that's when we decide what plan we're opening.
Based on using the 14-day trend data, we would be looking at that decision, uh, Dr. Hooker, and we would be looking at that decision on August 13th, um, for the, the, looking at the trailing 14 days and where we are at in Hamilton County.
I don't know, I, if, if we moved up to a week before, I would rather us, if we've got better, I would much rather open all the way in if we, or if we're trending in the right direction and we moved from red to orange. I don't know why we wouldn't open full. I know that a week ahead, we can't do it. After that, we can't change. Because Amy, isn't that what you said, was that if we gave you a week, that was all you needed?
I think the earlier that we can make this decision, the better that it is for everyone involved. Uh, the better it is for families, the better it is for teachers to be able to set up their classrooms as well as have multiple, um, lessons in place in case we do need to change. I think knowing what we're going to do as soon as we can is the most beneficial. Could we have it ready in a week? Absolutely. Would it be better if we knew ahead of time? Of course.
Okay.
I think with the way our numbers are going up, I think we had the highest number today, probably, right? Dr. Hooker, I'm not sure. Yesterday and today...
The last time I've looked at the numbers, we have flattened out. And so again, Dr. Fachi, who was ten times brighter than I, is very concerned about the Midwest right now. Um, so that makes me very concerned about the Midwest, uh, and Ohio specifically, so. But the last number I saw this morning was that it was, we had flattened out. We weren't going down yet, but we had flattened out.
I think to your point, Dr. Hooker, though, earlier, uh, how we start the year and navigate through these shifts in plans together once we get started is got to be influenced again by that 14-day trend data, which is the best we have available to us with the county health alert system right now and those health experts who are going to be helping us. And in addition to the, uh, Hamilton County Health Commissioner and the doctors who work with that staff, we are also continuing, as you all know, board members, to explore two different consulting partnerships that we will finalize soon, where we will be able to continue to gather advice from experts who can advise us on the trend data and the guidelines. And the more we can look at and analyze, the better at intervals. And I, I think to Mrs. Campus' point, um, the sooner we can articulate, you know, how we are going to open, the better, knowing that our staff are coming back on the 17th, and many of them are gonna come next Monday to start getting into classrooms.
Okay.
So, um, you know, a couple of things. I, I'm, I know that our parents just need to know what's going on, and they need to know how to plan, especially if it is not going to be Plan A initially. They have to be sure that they have coverage on the days when their children are home, and they need to be able to know that they can, um, get online with their children, et cetera. Also, our teachers obviously need planning. So as we sit right now today, we're in red, right, in Hamilton County. So if we had to make the decision today, it would have to be Plan B because the county is in red. And right now, we don't really know for sure about our own population because we're not all together. And I'm, you know, I don't know that we necessarily get reports of positive testing. So just for a scenario, let's think about if, if right now, what everybody needs is a decision. If we say we're red, we need to start in Plan B, what that can do for us, I believe, is A, give some level of certainty. B, it gives, regardless, it gives us a chance to transition back into the school year. You have to remember, we haven't been in our school building since March, and we have children that have not been in a regular routine for almost six months now. I mean, by, by the time we get to school, it'll be close to six months, five and a half. I think that reentry can be very challenging. Correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, Melissa, Jim, anybody? Um, but that, I think that, that transition back in can be very challenging. So if we allow ourselves that, that easing back in for a week or two, where we have the Plan B, the teachers have really intensive one-on-one time with our children because the class sizes will be so much smaller, and then, you know, pray, keep our fingers crossed, that right after Labor Day, we're in yellow or orange, we don't have any incidents of, you know, or, or many positive cases, we could then transition more seamlessly into Plan A. How does that feel? Because it feels to me like if we try, would try to make a decision today to go back to Plan A, we, we're already violating our own guardrails. And then also, we, going back in Plan A might push us to Plan B faster than Plan B could push us to Plan A. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I, I... I agree. I think it's because kids have been out for a long time and Plan B is something that's preparing them for A and C both. And if teachers know ahead of time, they are more prepared. And this will give, I agree with the point where you said that, uh, this will help with, because the number of students ratio with teachers would be less, so they will have more, you know, one-on-one time with them and bringing them back after so long and just preparing them for, God forbid, we go into purple and we have to go online. So then kids are getting prepared that if you have to go online, this is what it is. I just hope that things get better and we can go back in Plan A. That's my hope, but, you know, I think the Plan B, it eases them up slowly and there is a possibility that, you know, with A, there is a chance that we might go into Plan B sooner versus B. I think Plan B will be easier for kids to transition to any of the plans if we have to move forward. And the sooner, I agree that the sooner we make the decision, parents will have, uh, the opportunity to, you know, look into, when kids are home, who's going to take care of them. Teachers will have time to plan for how the school is going to look like, at least for the beginning. Maybe we should, you know, just go with Plan B, no matter, unless we get into purple. Otherwise, I think we should start with B and then after two weeks, just see where we are and then move into Plan A or, you know, wherever it's needed.
Kim, I think you had some comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, I mean, I think we've been in red, we are in red. We have to accept we're in red. We're gonna start with Plan B. Um, I love the fact that we, I mean, the administrators, you've done a great job, uh, talking about reevaluating, you know, every two weeks. And I know, you know, thank you, Amy, for like, working with the administrators to make everybody feel comfortable that, you know, every two weeks, we look at what the health data is and we can make decisions, whether that's moving to Plan A, whether that's staying in Plan B, whether that's moving to all, all online. I, I think it's critical about the health and safety of our students, and I really like the two-week, you know, like, it takes that amount of time to look at the health data and for, you know, the administrators and this, and our teachers to get comfortable that we're gonna move to a different level. So I, I, I really like that effect, and, and so I appreciate that, and I feel like we're gonna be starting Plan B, and it's, it's not, it's not what everybody wants to hear, but I think it's just the reality of where our health data is today, and I think we have to have that kind of guidance on a go-forward basis.
And I think, um, again, I'd like to have Melissa just explain again, an overview for those who will, who will consume this meeting after the fact about the plan, but our county health commissioner had not really weighed in to date on some of the information on reopening plans, and over the last two weeks, And over the last two weeks, many superintendents have had dialogue with Greg Kesterman and the county health commission doctors. And he vocalized, verbalized to us in a meeting today that he would only be comfortable with school reopening plans that maintained six feet of social distancing and a face covering policy, which again, signals to me that we're doing the right thing and we have to rely on some of that recommendation. And I feel like he made a pretty succinct statement today, which is something that we have been asking for and a rationale based on what we, we have been seeing around us. So I'm very comfortable talking about Plan B and red. I can't foresee that that will change in the next week. But again, to your point, Kim and Eddie, we will continually evaluate it and look at that trend data and talk about why we should shift or when it's necessary or required to shift based on what's going on around us. Dr. Stewart, could you just talk a little bit about what Plan B means?
Yeah. So there are lots of school districts around us that are considering two different plans. One plan is when all students come back into school and the opposite is when all students have to be in a remote setting. And as a school district, working with the educational professional organization, we decided it was really important to have something in between because there is nobody who wants our students back at school more than the Indian Hill educators. We really want them back. So if we can have them back in a setting that allows us to have the largest amount of safety precautions possible, we wanted to do it. That's how Plan B, called the hybrid model, was born. So Plan B allows students to report to school for half of their educational time. So either on Monday and Tuesday or on Thursday and Friday, students are in their classrooms 50% of the time, which allows for the largest space of social distancing. And teachers will also have less of a student teacher ratio, which allows us to maximize our instructional time individually with students. I feel very, very confident that our skilled Indian Hill teachers are going to be able to make great academic progress within Plan B as well. We know it's a challenge. People say unprecedented is the key word. I'm going to tell you it's challenge. We know it's going to be a challenge, but we're up for that challenge. So when students are at school, they will be working with their teachers. And when they're at home, we will have online activities available for the students so that they can continue to progress academically. Wednesday will be an opportunity to have live sessions online. So our students will be at home. Teachers will be engaged with them during the morning for synchronous live online sessions. The afternoon will be used for the teachers to collaborate together so that we can make sure that we're, have the best lesson plans possible for students. And Wednesday will also be a day that we can dedicate lots of energy to deep cleaning between the two different groups of students who will report to school.
I just want to say one thing is that I have noticed not many districts have three plans. So I really applaud you all for bringing Plan B. Right? Because this really shows that how dedicated you guys are for bringing these kids back and educating them. Like many districts have just said, we will bring either everybody or everybody goes online. There is no in-between. I think Indian Hill has been a leader here showing people that, no, we do care about kids and we do want to bring them in. And I think the Plan B, the best thing is that it takes away the anxiousness of students who have been home for so long and might be a little scared, skeptical about, you know, how things are going to be if they go back. Because I have met so many kids and they have mo- most of them that I've spoke, they said, I don't know, I have been home. I don't know if I'll be safe. I'm worried that what if I get COVID? So I think this helps them because now we are able to give them six feet distancing. They have, they can be with their teachers, they can see their friends, and at the same time, they can be safe.
I think that's an important thing, an important thing to reiterate under Plan B, so that everybody understands is that this model allows us to maintain six feet or more of social distancing in all of our classroom environments.
Right. This gives them an opportunity to come back.
Well. Go ahead.
Sorry, Dr. Hooker. If I could just also add just one thing, if that, we also know that we're going to have students who are not going to feel comfortable or safe reporting to the school environment at all. And so again, if we start our school year in Plan B, we're going to have a ongoing online virtual program available for those students. The name of that program is called the Brave Virtual Academy. And for students who are enrolled in that program, we are going to make sure that they're working with Indian Hill teachers to have Indian Hill curriculum so that those students have the same opportunities as our students who are in a face-to-face setting, which is a high-quality education.
And we are going to ask those families who are not comfortable to attend in person. So again, whether we opened in Plan B or C or A, that, that in-person selection is different from the Brave Virtual Academy. Those families who do not feel comfortable or who cannot attend in person, who would choose the Brave Virtual Academy, would be making that commitment for at least a quarter of the school year. And then they would reevaluate that.
The only thing I, you know, I'm, I'm, I can read a room. I think I may be losing this battle. But I think it would be, it's sad if we go to yellow by the 13th to sit there and start two days a week. But I'm reading that everybody else likes that and is more comfortable with that. But I, I think that's just going to be a tragedy to, to be, and I'm hoping I'm right and I'm hoping we're moving in the right direction and we're going to be in yellow by then. But, you know.
Dr. Hooker, I think if we're in yellow by then, we can certainly call a special board meeting.
I totally agree with that. If we, if we go from red to yellow in Hamilton County, then absolutely we're back on, we're back in the.
Well, if we're willing to do that, that's fine with me. I just, I would hate to miss that opportunity. I hope that I'm right.
No, we all want kids back. We all want kids back and you're not alone. It's just, you know, we're just talking about the situations that we are in. Right now, we are in red. So how do we go about? Because a lot of parents asking that. They need to know.
That's fine. If we're willing to reassess it, if, if things get much better, which I pray they will.
Always bring, yes, we can always move back. Like, I don't think in the history of Indian Hill, we ever had this many board meetings in the month of July. So, you know, I think we are setting a trend that we can, any situation, we can move in quickly and make a decision.
Being nimble is critical. Following the county data, following our own district data is critical. And you know, the ultimate goal for all of us is to have all of our children back in school full-time and be normal again. But there's only so much of that scenario over which we have control. So let's control what we can control and understand what we can't control and work within those guidelines. And I think as long as we all agree on the guidelines, the guardrails and how tight those guardrails are and what informs a change, then I think we'll all be fine. And I think it's the uncertainty that's been so hard on all of our.
Sorry, I made a mistake. Hold on. I don't know what I did. I don't know what I did.
Elizabeth, just mute yourself.
Yeah.
Figuring it out.
Yeah. So, like, it's what we, what we can control right now is so little, but what we can control is some certainty for our families, for our administrators and for our teachers. And that's, that's, I think, the gift we can give to our community because that's all we can give right now. If, you know, I wish we could wave a magic wand and be out of this, but yeah. So I think I hear your concerns about, I get it. If we're yellow, there's no reason. But on the other hand, we do have to ease these kids back in and we do need to ease the teachers back in. And we have to be ready in our classrooms to be able to go to six feet and to be, to be able to go to Plan B if necessary. So there's, there's so many variables that I think, let's, let's give the administration and the teachers the best set of tools and the best support we can and, and give our families some certainty.
I agree.
Yeah.
Members, if there are no other questions about the plans, I would just reiterate, and, and when we share out our parent information, they will be able to see this. If parents are interested in the Brave Virtual Academy, they will be able to select and enroll in that Virtual Academy option for anybody who doesn't feel comfortable. Everybody else would then be opening the school year in the plan based on where we are with the county health alert system and whatever color we are in. And we would move forward that way and reevaluate every 14 days, looking at that trend data, beginning September 10th at the latest, with a, a first review. And if we can move beyond those plans without any other questions, I'd like to talk about the other most important piece of our safety preparation tonight.
Can I, can I ask one question on that? Respect to electing into Brave Academy, there's a lot of families in our community that have already filled out a form electing to do one thing or the other. So are you asking that those families are supposed to fill it out again? Or, because I know that, I mean, we have a number of people have already elected to go into online learning. So is that something that they're going to, I, I just think it has to be clear on whatever we send out that whether you selected before or didn't, you know, like you have to do it again. So.
Yes, thank you. I think that's a really good question. We are asking that every single family completes this form and indicates again, if they're going to be involved in the in-person learning versus Braves Virtual Academy. And I apologize in advance for having people to fill out the question again. It is one question on this new form. The reason that we ask that is because we have had multitude of families email us directly to say, really, I've changed my mind on what I want to do. And so can you just record that for us, Melissa? And though I would love to do that, it's getting very complicated to keep track of what people want individually like that. So if we could just start fresh by having everybody fill this out one more time, it would be so helpful. And I apologize in advance for having people to do it twice.
That's, that's great. I just want to make sure that we make it very clear in the form because as a parent of a student in the high school who's made an election already, I want to make sure that it's clear that I have to either make an election one way or the other. And my prior election doesn't count. So I just want to make sure we're clear.
Maybe put that right at the top of the survey. Just say, please, I don't care how many surveys we've sent out. This is the final one, which decisions will be made on.
That's great advice. Thank you.
Melissa, the other question I have for you is what if someone elects to go in person? And then the child feels uncomfortable with the setup and the situation? Can they change to the Braves Academy?
If there is a family who wants to make a change, we're asking that people try to maintain the, the quarter commitment. However, we don't want anybody to be in an unsafe situation and there could be circumstances that change in people's lives where they no longer feel like it's safe to be in an in-person setting. And if that's the case, we want them to reach out to their child's principal and have that discussion so that we could then can talk about removing them from the in-person setting and having them join the Braves Virtual Academy. On the flip side, if there's somebody who chose to be in the Braves Virtual Academy and before the end of the quarter says, oh, my child's really missing their friends and they'd like to come back face-to-face. We would love to be able to accommodate that, but we are going to ask that they wait till the end of the quarter because by at that point, we will already have made all of those changes of which teachers are teaching online versus which teachers are going to be face-to-face and the setup of the classrooms and all of those things. So we'll make those changes at the end of the first quarter.
Who's teaching the Braves Academy? Is it our teachers?
It is our teachers teaching the Braves Virtual Academy using our curriculum.
And is it if, let's say a child is, chooses face-to-face, but then, you know, and let's face it, the school's not going to be the way they're used to. It's going to be all different, rather alien in a way. And if they can't adjust and accommodate and they want to move on to the Braves Academy, will they still have their teacher? Or will it be a totally different teacher?
They will be assigned the Braves Virtual Academy teacher. So, and it's because we want children to be able to have access to their teacher just like they would in a face-to-face setting, but in a virtual way. If that child maintains the same teacher that they had in the in-person learning, they really wouldn't have very much access to their teacher at all because that teacher would be standing in front of their classroom, teaching the students within the classroom all the time. That's not enough interaction between the student and the teacher. That's why we've designated these online teachers because they will be able to focus on this entire class in a virtual manner like that. So for that child who has to make that change, yes, they'll, will get a new teacher. But again, I feel confident that our teachers are really good at accommodating students and forming good relationships with students. So if we have to make a change, I believe in their ability to form relationships with students and to fold that student into the community that they've created in an online manner.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So, Warren, are we ready to move on to discuss another really critical element, which is our face covering policy?
Yeah. Can I ask a very quick question to Dr. Stewart again? So when you are sending the survey, are you also asking parents to make selections which day? Like, when would you be making the decision that which day you want the students to come back? Like, you know, if we are going with Plan B, then because some of the parents have younger kids and they are waiting on knowing that when their kids at Indian Hill will go.
Well, wait, we've determined the start date.
No, no, no. No, I'm not saying that. Like, in, so kids will be going Monday, Tuesday. So which day and where that break will be? Like, you know, alphabetically, alphabetically, where is that break going to be? When is all that going to be determined?
That's a great question. The principals have already started to work in advance with the transportation director, Mrs. Diane Spurlock, on how we can set up bus routes that allow us to bring 50% of our students in and a reasonable amount of time for our students who are on the buses. And so part of the decision about whether students will be assigned to team number one, which is Monday, Tuesday, versus team number two, which Thursday, Friday, is going to be based on transportation and the residence of where people live. There are some other factors as well. As an administrative team, we've made a commitment to make sure that all siblings are on the same schedule. We think that that's very important as well. So we will be making those decisions as soon as we can. We're going to ask that parents complete this enrollment information by midnight on Monday, August 10th, so that as soon as we get that information, we can try to turn that around as quickly as we can and then look at who's online versus who's not and how we can make those decisions. In the meantime, while people are filling out that survey, we will be working on those placements. If there are extraordinary circumstances that are going to be really important for a family to, to have team one versus team two, we have created a form where people can share that information with the principals so they, they can consider that in the placement. But I also have to be really transparent that we can't guarantee those requests because it's a pretty complicated system when we're talking about balancing class sizes and transportation and siblings. But we'll do the very best that we can if people have extraordinary circumstances.
Melissa, is that really enough time with the busing thing? That is a com- complex situation of figuring this busing out. Is that going to give you enough time to do that?
Amen, Dr. Hooker. I would agree. Like, it feels like, it makes me nervous. But I also wanted to try to be really respectful of families that if there are people who are not looking at their email every day, that we've given them enough time. I'm really, really hoping that we have the same kind of response that we've had in the past. And as soon as we get the survey out, like 50% of the families answer it right away, which is what the trend has been for important surveys in the last several months. So I'm hoping that. which is what the trend has been for important surveys in the last several months, so I'm hoping that happens again. Maybe you can help spread the word.
The problem is, is you have some people that if you give them August tenth, it'll be August ninth, eleven fifty-five. I, I think I would move that up, and then if we have to run down some people, I'd run them down. But I, I think you really want to give people a, a reasonable amount of time. I mean, Kim, anybody else have a thought on exactly how much is reasonable?
About a week is a good time for parents to make a decision because if they want a decision quickly from your end, then they need to make a decision quickly too.
By next Friday.
Yeah.
Instead of giving that whole next weekend, that might be kind of in the middle.
Good. Sorry, I just know how much work you all have got to do, and I just think we need to give you as much time as we can.
I agree, yeah.
And I, I would just really ask everyone watching and parents, you know, we're all in this together, and we all know that the parents have been terrific about, about responding. So just know that we're all, we're all doing our best. Our administration is working way overtime. Our teachers are working way overtime, and our parents, I know, have concerns. So it's, we're all in this together. And I really believe that we have the kind of district that can manage this, so.
Can I make one more problem for you? Sorry, Melissa. I think you need to make it a two-question thing. If you're planning attending, are you planning on using public transport, or using our transportation?
Yeah.
That really is going to matter. So we need to say, and we need to say, if you decide you're not using it or you are using it, we need a commitment for a quarter, just like your other commitment, because otherwise it'll be a nightmare.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Yeah, I agree. What Nancy just said, that to the parents who are watching it, it's not easy for anyone to make these decisions with every day, things are changing. And the administration is doing a great job. We just have to work with them and not get frustrated. You know, we are all in this together, as, you know, Nancy has just said, and we all have been saying the same thing. I, I just feel that, you know, let's be the leader in advocating other school districts to show what a strong community we are. And just support a district administrative team or teachers in keeping our kids safe and learning during this time.
So we will, we will take all of those items into account, and we have a board resource will be sharing with all of you to prepare our parent message and update. If you could take a look and review that, please, and give me some feedback. Board members will move on and get that out as quickly as we can to our parent community. And I think one of the things that our parents have been asking about, as we all know for months, is a face covering policy, and if we could move to just discuss that for a moment, regardless of what plan we're talking about with the in-person plans, it's very important that everybody understand how serious a face covering policy is. We have worked with our representatives to put together a policy that is very tight and sends a strong message of safety. Any student, adult, staff member, visitor, and visitors will be limited throughout a school year, which will not be normal for many people, would be expected and required to have a face covering when they arrive on campus and to meet the policy. So we have a, a first reading of that face covering policy this evening, and we would like to have any questions or dialogue about that at this time. And just know that we would like to get this approved as soon as we can because this will answer a major question that we've received throughout the summer about all of our planning and the safety measures we're putting in place.
I think you did a great job on it. I read it over. I think it's well-written, and I think is your, to your point, Kirk, this is a strong message. We want the entire community to understand. Everybody's going to have a face mask on. If you can't wear a face mask, we've got other options, online learning and things like that. We, we respect that. You, you have the right not to wear a face mask, but don't come to this building and infect others and get, infect teachers and infect other students. So, strong policy, well-written, and, you know, let's, let's go for it. Kim, go. You're up.
I was going to say, I agree. I reviewed the policy. I thought that it was a strong policy and satisfied all the legal requirements, and I am prepared to. I mean, obviously, we can't vote tonight. It's a, a first reading, but I, I, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of the proposal that you guys sent out.
Yep. I have, I have no changes to what's written. So thank you to all the work that went into that.
Yeah, I agree. It's a well-written policy, and yes, as Dr. Hooker just said, it is very important. Everyone wears a mask. And there'll be no exceptions. If, you know, it's not something, then yes, you have other options of getting the education. Great. So thank you for working on this.
Since, can I ask one more question? We brought this up in one of our four hundred other meetings this year that we were, that was there possibility of improving the quality of the air? So have we been able to locate or acquire any in-house HEPA filters that we can place around? Is there anything that we can do to improve the inside air quality?
Great question, Dr. Hooker. We have been working with several consultants, and we are awaiting an environmental report from one of those consultants who has been talking to us about everything from our air handlers to HEPA to filters that we have already worked on switching out throughout the summer. We're going to share some more information on August fourth about some of our safety planning. But airflow and environmental controls is something we've definitely been talking to the consultants about.
Okay, I just, I worry that, you know, if we don't buy soon, we may, may not be able to buy. That's my only concern. So we need to get that ramped up and see whether we can acquire any HEPA machines.
Well, we got the right Director of Operations on the case.
Absolutely.
I have one comment regarding your face mask policy, and I've been asked this question. And I think it would help to clarify if, if people, students have to supply their own face masks or are we supplying them?
We, right now, our stance is that we are asking students and families to supply their own face coverings, but we are also exploring different-sized face masks, face coverings, and shields for different learning environment situations. We are working with consultants who are specializing in pediatric face coverings, for example. So I hope that not only we'll be able to provide supplies when they're necessary for those in need, but also maybe be able to share some resources and educate people about some of these things as we move forward. And everybody has preference at times. Right now, I don't believe to start our school year, we can fully control that. However, in our reopening documents, we do talk a little bit about the safety measures and layers we're putting in place on campus. And of course, this face covering policy does specify how a face covering should be worn and what it should cover, and gives you some detail. And I think that's the important part for everybody to review.
Okay, so any other questions on face covering? We will be, yeah, we see a buddy down there. Hey there. Just had a five-year-old birthday.
This little crazy, hi, everybody. Sorry, I'm late. We were learning about their school opening and getting excited about that as well. So glad, glad I was able to catch you a little bit. And yes, every time this is on, this one wants to see what's going on.
Well, we like that. Curious child. It's good.
She is.
Happy belated birthday.
Maybe she said happy birthday. What do you say?
Okay, so we will, because we have a meeting, guess what? In what, five days on Tuesday? We will have the opportunity to revisit the face mask policy and vote on Tuesday night on that. But families, rest assured, this is we all know this is critical, and we all know we can't move forward without a very strict face covering policy. So it'll be posted and you can read it and.
I hate to throw a rock in. Just one question. I know, I'm just a pain in the butt, but it does not mention in there the fact that a face shield is not an acceptable alternative to a face mask, and it is not.
Well, this says fully cover the mouth, nose, and chin, and the shield does not do that.
Well, I think someone might try to argue that. But I just want to make sure it's clear. Maybe we need to add one line or have the lawyer add one line.
We, we had asked, we had asked our lawyer to review that, and he actually removed that edit and said it was unnecessary at the time, but we can revisit it if you like.
Well, just as long as the pay, the people know that that's not an adequate covering of the face mask and, you know, the nose and the mouth. Okay, I'm fine with that. If the lawyer said it's cool, it's cool.
No, I think the more specific we can be, the better.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so is there any other business this evening that anyone needs to address?
No.
Okay, hearing that, could I please have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Thank you to those watching. We'll see you again on Tuesday. I feel like we have.
What time are we starting on Tuesday?
Do we have a time yet? I don't think we have a lot for executive session.
Six thirty was what we had looked at originally for executive session, and seven o'clock start time.
Great, thank you.
Perfect. All right.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, guys. Congratulations, Mr. Director.